We'll call this council meeting Monday, February 28th to order. Invocation given by the mayor, pledge allegiance by Mr. Ashburn.
Let us pray. Dear heavenly Father, we thank you for the many blessings you have provided to us. We ask your wisdom and guidance as we conduct the business of our city. We ask your protection for our military, both home and abroad, and your protection for the people of Ukraine. Father, we ask for your special comfort and blessings for Mr. Bailey and his family on the death of his sister. All these things, we ask in Christ's name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Phillips, will you do the roll call?
Mr. Dahl.
Here.
Ms. Tolliver.
Here.
Mr. Ashburn.
Here.
Mr. Stewart.
Here.
Mr. Bailey.
Here.
Before we move to adopt the agenda, we're going to add a number 11 Airport Director Appointment and a number 12 Executive Session. So with that being said, do I have a motion to adopt the agenda?
I make that motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion on the agenda? Hearing none, we'll vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Agenda is adopted. Move to... Next is approval of previous minutes. Have a motion to approve the previous minutes?
I make that motion.
Do I have a second?
I second.
Any discussion on the minutes? Hearing none, we'll vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Minutes are approved. It's no old business, so we'll move straight into new business. First things, to recognize the Scottsboro Indoor Track Team, Boys Indoor Track Team.
Mayor? We're going to recognize a few individuals and then we'll recognize the whole team.
General.
First, Rex Green. Rex won first place, or state champion in 1600 meters this year. He also finished second place in the 800 meters and ran a time that was faster than the old state record at second place. Congratulations to Mr. Rex Green. Second, Devon Walker. Devon did so well, dude. Maddox Ham. If you don't know who this kid is, this guy might have been breaking records everywhere. Maddox is the new state champion, new state record holder by more than a foot and a pole hole. He's also the U.S. number one in the nation pole hole. So, Mr. Maddox.
Wow.
And our four-by-eight-hundred team, Hamilton Richardson, Stephen Jones, Reese Bell, and Rex Green. Rex, come back over here. And the four-by-eight-hundred state champions. How are you other men? And this is recognition for the state championship title, 6A Indoor Track and Field Meet. Thank y'all. Incredible athletes, thank you. Somebody want to get this Devon Walker? I want y'all ready for this.
It wasn't that long ago, we were doing this last year. The same group, but different boys. It's incredible what they keep doing. All right, number two, is the public hearing on the rezoning of property located at 1290 Porter Road. This is the time and place for the public hearing. Is there anybody here for this? Mr. Clark? Anybody here against this? Mr. Hurf? All right. So, Mr. Clark, I give you the chance to speak first.
I presented you guys the last time. I didn't bring paperwork out of the city office.
It's fine.
But I'm just, I'm asking from Go- from R1 to C4.
Okay.
And I spoke with Josh in depth about that, and that's what he recommends, so...
And anyone have any questions, Mr. Clark, on the property that he's wanting to rezon? The only question, I guess I'll go back to the same question I had that night, was is there anything permanent that you know that you want to build there yet?
Not a hundred percent. I mean, I'm trying. I want it to be a Dollar General, but I hadn't thought they'd work that shit a hundred percent.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Mr. Clark. And then, Mr. Irvin?
I'd like to thank y'all. Give me the opportunity to speak to y'all on regards to this. You know, I know a whole lot about construction, been doing it my whole life. The problem I have is not what's going to be built on this property, this zone residential, which it was zoned that when he purchased it, matter of fact. You know, the land was offered to me before it was offered to him, actually. But what's happened is he has dammed me up. You know, for a foundation, for anything to be built, it's got to start, you got to dig the mud and the swampland out, and you put it back with red field dirt. If he'd have done that, it'd have been the same elevation. I wouldn't have a berm this high on the corner of my property, nor Eddie Carter have one on his. But when he gets finished doing whatever's built there, I know there'll be asphalt, there'll be concrete. Okay, that means the water cannot go in the ground, it's got to run somewhere. Well, it's going to run right off into that neighborhood, which is going to come off of my property. But I have no problem with what's built on the highway. I want to know what's going to be built adjacent to my property, and that's why I object to having it rezoned. But anyhow, I talked with the people in the neighborhood, and evidently, none of them showed up to, you know, to voice their opinion. But I've got a video that proves what I said. You know, of course, that's about all, that's about it.
You want to have any questions, Mr. Irvin, on this?
How bad was the flooding?
The flooding, eyes across the road, there were debris, there was a tree limb about this big in the road, in the Sonic Drive. Looks like a river coming down between those two houses, which there has been water traveling through there. The lady up the way, of course, it's hearsay, but I'll tell you what she said, water is standing in her backyard, which has never happened, water is standing in my timber. But anyhow, it's, it just wasn't prepped right, and like Lamar said, I mean, I know Lamar, matter of fact, you know, very well, and, you know, this is, this is business. Me and him have no problem between one another, that it makes his property worth more, having it rezoned to C4. In return, it makes my property worth less. But, I mean, that's pretty much where I'm at, you know what I mean?
Where is your property?
My property is north of his.
North.
I mean, I could pull it up on Google if you want to see it. I mean, I wish we had it where, when Bob... And by the way, Bob Freeman was thinking about actually a, when he was going to purchase it, condominiums. And y'all...
This is it. This is Mr. Irvin's above it.
Right here.
This is his above it.
What was it?
This is Lamar's.
This is Lamar, when he wanted to rezon. This is Mr. Irvin's above it, right here.
Right here.
Uh huh. It's about, they both have about 11 acres each, right there.
But, you know, as Mr. Hastings spoke, I think Steven, the surveyor, on the, he said the land wouldn't fit to build nothing on it. That's what he said, and that's why, matter of fact, somebody, it was never second, that's why, that's why they come before y'all, matter of fact.
Any other questions? And I'm sure Mr. Irvin would be glad to show you that video. I've seen it already.
That's your thing.
So, and now this will, of course, there's a 15-day state law before you can vote, and the way it falls, our next meeting after that would be the 28th of March, before this can be voted on. So you have a month to get out there and look at it between now and then.
You know, I even called the core engineers, called TBA. Everybody referred me to the civil engineer, which is Mr. Littles. I contacted him, and he told me that it was not his responsibility to tell anybody what they did or didn't do on their property. So, this is where we're at.
Let me try and get a visual here. So, if it's raining hard like it did last week, which way is the water flowing in relation to your property? Is it coming from your property onto his?
Yes, and that's a, actually, I looked this up online, and that is called, that is called, let's see here, civil law rule, cannot change natural flow of water.
So the water flows from your property onto his?
Yes, sir, it did. But see, now, it's going to the edge of our property, running down that berm, which is right in between the two houses on the Sonic Drive.
I see.
But, you know, I talked with those folks, and matter of fact, there's going to be a bad flooding issue because that wasn't much of a rain, that was only like a couple inch rain.
Yeah.
You know, and I should have took a picture of it running across the road with a limb this big laying there, and, but, I mean, I've got a video showing, you know, what the containment that you put up for the silk containment. Well, it's done breached that. I mean, and it's running back over on me, it's running on them. And I know all the water's headed that way. Mr. Clark mentioned that the water did go underneath Highway 72. He's a hundred percent correct. It just changed the path of the way it's getting there.
Got you.
But that's all I have to say, folks. I appreciate you listening to me.
Thank you.
How many houses will this water impact?
Well, three, to my knowledge. And Mr. Honeycomb. Honeycomb, oh, here, you're here. Are you going to speak?
I can, I can tell you.
Well...
Go ahead.
But come on up here with me.
Hi, I'm Karen Honeycomb, and my husband and I, Brandon Honeycomb, we bought a house on Las On Drive on June 23rd, 2003. And in 2003, they had had a big flood downtown, and so we were able to look at all these different properties, and this house was, you know, not flooded or didn't have any water damage. Well, over the years, well, here recently, since they have done some changes on Porter Road, where they have basically, the drainage to our house, I mean, our backyard is now soupy. We used to be able to play in the backyard with our kids, 11, that are now 11 and 13, but they were born in this house and raised in this house. And we have three kids. We can't do that anymore. Our backyard is soupy. It is, you know, you can tell our house needs pressure wash. We have moss growing. It's, the ditch bank is always running. You know, used to, you would have, it would run off. You know, you would have it run off. But now, since they have built up and they've taken away the vegetation behind there, there's nowhere for it to go. And so, you know, our, our yard, our, you know, property is impacted by this water because they have built it up, and we haven't had those kind of rains since then. We haven't had the flood in a very long time, and it's never been in our house. So even with this minor water, it's not running off like it used to. It would have been gone in a day or so. I mean, it didn't matter if it, I mean, it was, it would be gone. Now, it's, you know, it's impacting the way it runs off the front yard, the way it runs off the backyard, because, you know, they've also built those other houses that have, that's impacted the way it runs off. Because for 15 years, there was no houses beside us until, you know, last five or six years, something like that, I can't remember, but it was rather recently. Now, we don't, we don't have that ability, you couldn't put, we couldn't put a building in our backyard if we wanted to, because we would, you know, it's impacted by the way that the drainage is. And that's all I really have to say about that. I mean, this home is our investment, our life investment. We may not have much, but we earned that ourselves, you know, and it's our home, and we, you know, we'd like to be able to still utilize our backyard or develop it or, you know, do, do great things with it, but at this point, it's, it's become a swampy mess.
What street do you live on, man?
I live on Las On Drive, 1136 Las On Drive.
1136?
That'd be the third house, wouldn't it?
I am. I'm the one that has the dryer lot compared to speaking, and, you know, we didn't have this problem before, but now, you know, they've built two more houses, and yet, this other, whatever they've changed, the way it's flooded, I mean, it's even, you used to couldn't see the little stop, you know, that, where they surveyed years ago.
Survey mark.
Yeah, the survey marker, the little metal thing. Now, it's eroded to the point that, you know, it's sticking up, you know, on the ditch bank, and then there's constant water flooding. You can ask Baylin, who's my 11-year-old that was out there with his brand new shoes. Things like that, so it really is causing some problems, and I am afraid that it will be in our house, because there's nowhere for it to go, and they've built it up so much that you can see the grade, grading difference, and we don't, you know, we have wooden backyard, but still, it's not moving off the property the way it is. And now, we have divots where, you know, it just holds water, and it's going to need field dirt and all this other stuff, because it's washed away any vegetation that we had back there, so...
Can I add something to?
Certainly.
There is a, there's a small ditch that runs along the edge of my property. I told her husband, matter of fact, I didn't even recognize her. I kind of caught him yesterday, and they were in their, their sleep clothes evidently, you know what I'm saying? She kind of, she kind of cleans up pretty much. You know, but there's some roots that's going across this ditch, and I told her husband, I said, I said, "You take, and you take your axe, chainsaw, whatever you want to, to cut those to where that water can come on down, because that ditch was there when I bought the property." See, I'm not trying to change the natural water. And, you know, trying to help them out, but in return, it's going to dump more water on the, on the next houses on down the way.
And those houses have really been impacted. We have a new neighbor, and she's like, "Was it like this?" And I said, "No, ma'am, I'm sorry, it wasn't." I mean, this is, you know, I knew that those were, those lots were lower than ours, and, and, you know, building other houses impacted, but it used to just flow, you know, it'd flow on off, and you would have, you know, it'd be dried up. I mean, here it is, how many days since the rain?
It's been a couple.
I mean, I, I don't go out in the backyard. You don't see me outside, because my front yard's wet, my backyard's wet, and, you know, by the time, you know, so...
So you're saying, if this zoning gets changed and it gets paved or concrete on it, it'll make it worse?
Yes, sir. Well, I mean, the water can't absorb any ground. I mean, it's going to be concrete or asphalt, and that's just more runoff.
We do, we have, and I don't know, you know, it's only been since, you know, when they, whatever they changed on Porter Road, and now, since they've started removing that, because the trees would at least soak some of it up, and, I mean, that, in the back was always kind of, you know, there were lower levels, not on our lot per se, but on the, you know, the back of the, where, you know, the back where the woods were. Yet now, we're not, we're not drying up.
Well, water is standing in that timber, which belongs to me, which joins their property.
I hugged him, and I was like, "You're not cutting those trees, thank you."
But anyhow, I mean, it's kind of a, I mean, it's kind of a sad story for, for everybody involved, unless you're Mr. Clark, which he got there playing the game, we got there playing the loose.
Anyone else have any questions or anything?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Brad Shelton, I just don't have a dog in this fight, except my daughter. She just moved, and she lives in this neighborhood. She lives to the left of you, as you look at your house. Now, I, you know, I'm just saying that I am a witness to the, to the water there that just stands, and the ditch runs beside her house, and it just rocks there, but, you know, this was not a real big rain, but there's water standing here in her yard, you can't go in the backyard unless you got on...
Where's her house at?
It's next to hers.
So, so you're the one on up, then?
I live there, it's my daughter.
That's your daughters.
Okay.
But it is, it's not, I mean, we don't have a yard anymore, we have a swamp, and, you know, it's, this was our life's investment. We bought this house on a Wednesday, got married on a Saturday, and we've been living there ever since, and, you know...
All right, so this will be moved to March 28th. Oh, sure, I'd be glad to let Lamar.
Okay, I think, I give all you guys, my rebuttal on this is, I give every one of you guys, council members and the mayor, a topo map. You have a topo map, a topographical map, that an engineer did, a civil, certified civil engineer did. Okay, that water's going to the very same place that it's always been, and they're talking about paving and curb and gutter. If you do construction work, if you pave or, if you pave or concrete that parking lot, you know what's going to be in there? It's going to be inlets, and that water's going to have to be diverted to somebody. It's going to be just like Publix or Hardee's or whatever. There's going to be curb and gutter, and there's going to be inlets to pipe that water out where it's supposed to go. I have an ADM permit. Every, Mr. Bucky there said that, that inlet protection wasn't working. I have an engineering firm, OMI, out of Huntsville, every, it's, it's an only ADM permit, I had to pay $5,000 to get an ADM permit. They come out, did a study, every quarter inch of rain that happens, OMI has to come out, I got one today, and I got an email today, every, every quarter inch of rain, they have to come out and do a silk, silk inspection. I mean, ADM permit, but the corps has been out there, the AL doc's been out there, and none of them. Mr. Moore, I talked to him today. How many people's called complaining about water? That's the street department superintendent. Had no complaints, zero, not the first one. So, I'm, all I'm asking for is, yeah, it's going to, it's going to, it's going to put value to my property. I don't see, I don't see how I could devalue his property. It wouldn't do anything but make his property worth more, I would think. That, that would be my assumption. That would be for y'all to figure out. But if y'all got any questions for me, I'd be glad to meet anybody down there, anytime and show you.
Do the engineers require some kind of catchment coming up here, you know, like a catch pond?
Not, not at this time. When OMI did their, OMI did their study, they didn't require anything. But when, when something's built, if there's a Dollar General built there, okay, let's say there's a Dollar General built there, then I'm going to have to come to the city with some plans and get those things approved. Josh is going to look at them, and the stormwater's got to be, you got to have a stormwater permit, it's got to go to where it's not affecting anybody else. So, any more questions? And I could go on and on and on, I mean, I, we're not flooding anybody out, the topo map specifically shows that the water's going to the exact same place it was going. It's going out to 72, and it breaks and goes one way toward Las On Drive and goes back toward the other way, back toward 72.
I'd like to say, this won't be voted on until March 28th, the next time. And so, during that time, give every council member a month to look into it, and get, you can talk with both sides during that time. So this will conclude the public hearing, and like I say, it'll be voted on on March 28th. So we'll move to number three. Consider ordinance 629, amend the zoning ordinance for the, rezon the Allen property. Do I have a motion to approve this?
I make that motion.
Do I have a second?
I second.
Any discussion on that? Hearing none, we'll vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Number four, consider ordinance 630, amend the zoning ordinance to rezon the Crumley property. Do I have a motion to approve this?
I make that motion.
Do I have a second?
I second.
Any discussion on this? Hearing none, we'll vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Number five, consider selecting voting delegates for the upcoming Alabama League of Municipalities Convention. In the past, in your packet, you'll see, you have one, a voting delegate, two, a first alternate, and three, a second alternate. So I just need a motion, fill in those three spots. In the past, the mayor's always been our voting delegate and a council member on each of the first two, two alternates. So if I can get a motion to, for a voting delegate and two alternates.
I make a motion for the mayor to be our, our voting delegate.
And?
I make the first alternate for you, Richard Bailey.
Okay.
And second alter for Nita Tolliver.
Okay. We have a motion on the floor to make the mayor the voting delegate, myself as the first alternate, and Ms. Tolliver as the second alternate. Do I have a second on that?
I second.
Any discussion on that? Hearing none, we'll vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Number six, consider the agreement between the city and county for the Justice Assistance Grant Program Award. Do I have a motion to approve this?
I make that motion.
Do I have a second?
I second.
Any discussion on that? Hearing none, we'll vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Number seven, consider the job description changes for the vehicle maintenance department. Do I have a motion to approve this?
I make that motion.
Do I have a second?
I second.
Any discussion on that? Hearing none, we'll vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Number eight, consider the budget amendment for the batteries for the weather siren. Now, this will be $985 that would come out of excess sales tax. Do I have a motion to approve this?
I make that motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion on that? Hearing none, we'll vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Number nine, consider the budget amendment for additional truck for the building inspection department. This will be up to $35,000 to buy a truck off a source well. Do I have a motion to approve that?
I make that motion, sorry.
Go ahead, go ahead.
Mr. Dahl makes the motion. Do I have a second?
I second.
Second. Any discussion on that? Hearing none, we'll vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Number 10, announce, announce the library board appointment. In your packet, you'll see Cynthia Patric has asked to serve on the library board, where we have an opening for a while now. Do I have a motion to approve her?
I make that motion.
Do I have a second?
A second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. And number 11, we added Airport Director Appointment. This comes with a recommendation, so, Mayor?
I would like to recommend that Mr. J.B. Sandlin be appointed permanent airport director. He's done a tremendous job for us for the last several months, and... He's done a tremendous job for us for the last several months, and we need to go ahead and make this permanent.
Okay. You have a recommendation from the mayor? Do I have a motion to make Mr. Sandlin our Airport Director?
I'll make that motion.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion on that? Hearing none will vote, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Number 12 is an executive session, so I will need a roll call vote to go into executive session. Ms. Phillips, can you do the roll call vote?
Mr. Dahl?
Yes.
Ms. Tolliver?
Yes.
Mr. Ashburn?
Yes.
Mr. Stewart?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes, before we go in, Mr. Kinnaman, go over.
The purpose of the executive session will be to discuss the legal ramifications of, and the legal options for controversies not yet being litigated, but eminently likely to be litigated.
Thank you, Mr. Kinnaman.
Quoting the statutes.
Okay, and, of course, it says, this will be no more than 30 minutes. So, don't need to fang or nothing. Okay, so we'll go into executive session and be back in less than 30 minutes.